Yeah, Mark White and Liz.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, I have an adapter.
Yeah.
What's it, what's it for?
Yeah.
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 I think the cookie is waiting for me.
He did.
No, I like the cookies.
They should, uh.
Okay.
I can't.
Now we just got to get the owl thing. Is the owl on? I don't think the owl is on, so it's not a big. The participant in there. No, how about in the back? Where your fingers? No, no, it's just a. Hey there. Oh, my goodness. It's a party.
You okay? Yeah.
Oh, please, it's our side. So, is that on? It's definitely on.
How are you? Ah. Oh, I'm here and okay. It's been a day. It's been a day. Oh. But it's summer night.
Hello, Mark.
Chaotic.
How you doing?
Oh, you're near us. Okay.
We're just trying to get set up here, so.
Not a problem. I started wondering if it was me or you.
Yeah.
I think this is the power. Well, I understand the power is actually.
I was wondering how it was gonna go. Trouble shooting.
Um, well, thank you so much.
Thanks. People brought food. That was kind. I just stuffed two, two slices of pizza in my face on the way up the. Yeah. I, I picked up my son at six thirty in Sunderland and I got pizza from Frontier Pizza. Which was great. It was good. I ate it in the car. Who, who makes that? You know.
What's your son doing?
So my son, um, has, he's fifteen. He has a job at Thunder Mountain Bike Park, which is Berkshire in the summer. Um, and he rides there, so he. We have to get him there at the end of the year. There's another, another young, there's two other young men from Chutesberry, Amherst. So I drove there this morning and then she drove back.
No, I don't think so, because.
Yeah.
This is exactly what I did. I got called and they did the same things.
I want, yeah.
Mark, can you hear us?
I can.
Oh, we're just trying to get the, um, the owl to work.
Go on to your Zoom meeting and then.
No worries.
Oh. That's really, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, that's exactly, oh, here it is. No, we're good. That was great.
Oh, you just left.
We're coming back.
There you go. Oh, whoa.
Where, where is that coming from? Where is that coming from right there?
What's going on?
The owl will follow you.
Really?
Yeah.
That's right.
And if I start. Pick your nose, I'm sure it'll pick it up. Okay, here we go, here we go. Let's go. Let's look right at that thing on the table like I'm looking at the world.
So when you talk, it goes to?
You see it will go to me. So it's something to get used to. It's weird.
Weird how the Ricky ding town.
We do have a. Um, I don't see anyone online, so, you know, Tom will say you're in.
Okay.
I don't know if you need me for a call or anything, but. We don't, but I appreciate it. Yeah.
You're here. Make cookies should be part of the vote. That's to take it in.
That's great. Okay, so. All right, at seven ten, uh, I'll call this meeting on the planning board to order.
Finally.
Um, this meeting is a hybrid meeting, uh, with us, uh, most of us here at Town Hall. And, uh, we do have remote participation as well, and therefore the meeting is being recorded. And the first item on the agenda is a public comment. Is there anyone that would like to, uh, make a public comment?
I've got one if no one else does.
Go ahead.
So this is just a, this is a policy update for those who are involved, but I think. Last meeting, meeting before was talking about the upcoming climate bill that was going through the legislature. Yeah, and so, oh, what's it today?
That it didn't pass.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I didn't, I didn't have time to read it or stuff. I had a front page.
Yeah, so. The basic thing was that the legislature was going to limit. The size of which municipalities could regulate, so it could be a threshold, top threshold of twenty-five megawatts for winter solar. And a top threshold for a hundred megawatts for energy storage. And then there's a whole bunch of other stuff. And the Senate and the House, because it's such a functional legislature, couldn't agree. So by July thirty-first, the session ended at midnight. They didn't agree, so there was no compromise bill, so neither House could vote on it. So that whole two-year episode is now done. Um, my personal read is that there's huge blowback, because they, there's a lot of things they didn't do. There's an economic bill, there's a housing bill, all this kind of stuff. Um, so the governor's threatening to call them back into special session. But I think reading the quotes from Senator Barrett and Reverend Rory, who are the co-chairs, they still don't agree. So I don't necessarily think coming back for special session will get them anywhere. If they don't agree, basically what that means is beginning of January, the next legislative session starts. And then it's another two-year session and it resets to zero. So. Right now, it's us, what exists now, just until something else happens. So.
Well, I'm really willing to call us into, uh, special session if we have to solve a problem.
And you have their power.
You know, um. So, so when, once it ends, uh, you know, it, it, the legislative process that's got here so far is, is waning.
Yes.
But like, you know, since they've done, obviously done a lot of talking and work, can you kind of fast track some of that through with it? Or is it kind of like?
You are so rational. So, so the steps are, the session starts in January. And then all the legislators get assigned committees. So presumably the chairs will stay the same, but given the controversy for those. And then all the members have to get assigned. So by the end of January, members get assigned to the committees. This is a joint committee, so it's Senate and House in one committee. And then the first two weeks or periods of January, all the legislators have to file their bills. So the bills that started this whole process have to get refiled. And they could build on the past stuff, but then they have to get a hearing and, and both, and it's, so.
So people are less likely to jump on board with legislation on Thursday, personally.
I, I think they have to come to some kind of agreement. I mean, my, my general sense from reading, I mean, I've read both bills, but. The House was all about permitting and citing, and the Senate was about permitting and citing plus a bunch of other stuff. But. Um, policies governing possible fuel, et cetera, et cetera. So it's either gonna go wide or gonna go narrow if you agree.
Were they in the same place with permitting and?
Pretty much.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the big, the big threshold is the same.
I do wanna.
Yeah.
Much that I do like the, the topic.
Um.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Um, and anyone else? I, I just want to quickly, you know, thank everyone for coming. You know, it's, uh, and Ashley has been juggling a lot. I was on the line like, you know, maybe forty minutes ago. Um, so thank you. It's nice to, uh, see your faces in person. I, I appreciate it. But is it okay if we, uh, say our names for the people there? Yeah, sure, um, sure. Uh, yeah, but let's, uh, starting with Michael. I want to do a quick introduction for, uh, Mark and Liz and anyone who watches or listening to. Michael DeCiero, tech support.
I'm Ashley Byk.
Jeff Twisted.
Top secret. And Nathan Murphy. All right, can I approve this message?
Does anyone know the number of security? The Wi-Fi password is.
It's just password. I, I don't.
I can tell you this. I got into it.
Now, uh. What, what's next on our agenda? I'm gonna, uh, skip over landowner education guidance for the time being. We might kind of circle back here, especially if anyone comes on. Um, we're, you know, we want to talk about, uh, Mark's special permit. Um, catch, uh, anyone up, right? What happened was Mark emailed us. He was asking about, uh, the conservation restriction and how that could play out. If there was a transfer of ownership on the parcel, and he indicated he got a curb cut, and we said, well, you know, that, uh. Violates one of the conditions of the permit, and you're not supposed to get a curb cut until you get the conservation restriction. Um, so there's been a little bit of back and forth, uh, and then it's wrong, and Mark has emailed us and, uh. You know, he had some, uh, some questions that we can talk about tonight. Uh, real quickly, before we get into that part, Mark, um, I touched. Department. And, you know, their position on this sort of thing with, uh, the curb cut was, you know. They kind of look at it from a strictly highway department kind of, uh. Ben's point, you know, they do have the Conservation Commission, uh, take a peek and, and sign off on it. Um, presumably for, you know, wetlands, uh, considerations. Uh, and if it doesn't have any snags with, uh, from that perspective, they just issued the permit. You know, they're not, they're not doing any additional research. Um, so that's, that's what it is right now. That's FYI. Uh, the second thing is I did talk to the building inspector, uh, Jim Hawkins up at Burkhart. And essentially with a situation like this, where the planning board or, you know, for, for. All intents and purposes, any current granting authority, whether it's a zoning, you know, permit, or it could, could be the Concom in theory, right? Um, if there's, uh, some kind of, uh, thing like this where you have a condition and a permit. That it might not be readily apparent that it, you know, is or is not, uh, in compliance, uh. You know, we should communicate with the building inspector's office about those situations so that they know.
Yeah.
You know, I can't issue any permits for this parcel unless they have a conservation restriction in place, or whatever the case may be, right? So that's something moving forward whenever we deal with this sort of thing, and we should be. And making sure that we're in touch with, uh, Burkhart or, you know, the building inspector's office if needed. Um, you know, there, there is, you know, some expectation that they're gonna be doing their due diligence as well. Um. And, you know, we'll probably talk about this more later. Is it's kind of more of a focused item. Um, but, you know, like just for example, another thing we're talking about tonight, uh, later on the agenda is a. Uh, ZVA site plan review for an accessory dwelling unit on Leverett Road here. And that's a situation where a permit was issued by the building inspector before they even got a site plan review. Right? And then that's, I, that was, that was, uh, someone new. Right? So, um, the idea is, you know, we'll probably try and be, you know, proactive communicators in the process to try and. Do what we can do to make sure that, uh, we don't have any kind of snap oohs like the one that's going on down the street right now, we're gonna talk about later. Um, and now I would like to, uh, you know, open up the floor, uh, for Mark. You had emailed us and. And more or less offered, uh, to tear up the curb cut, um, permit and, uh. You know, I, I said I didn't have any comment on that at the time, obviously. Have, have you done that at this point or, or, or no?
No, our last conversation by email, um, you said, well, I'll come to the meeting and we have the discussion. So my, the first thing I want to say is I apologize. I'm, uh. A little bit older and I've got some issues that are. Um, taking away from my clarity, I think, sometimes. So I was looking at something else and, uh, trying to meet the requirements of that permit. And, uh. Your permit says very specifically, don't get anything until you have the Conservation Commission, uh, or Conservation Easement in place. Uh, after I went back and reviewed it when you had given me that first email. So I do apologize for it. My suggestion to Nathan in the email was, um, you know, cutting back to trees, that's just regular maintenance in the, in the, um, current drive path. I don't think that's an issue at all, but the. Uh, obviously getting the curb cut was a violation. It wasn't intentional. Um, it's, I'm fine with calling up the DPW and having him throw it away. I mean, it's a simple process to go through in the future for myself or, or a buyer of the property and have them do that. Uh, get the curb cut later on. I've talked to the building inspector and he said there are absolutely no concerns whatsoever. Conservation commissions, commissions have the same thing. Nothing's going to change, so, um, if it's me or somebody else in the future, they can get it. So my suggestion, so I get back on, uh, in line with my permit, is to call the DPW tomorrow and, or email them tomorrow and have them destroy the permit. For the curb cut. And then that takes care of it. Um, again, my apologies, it wasn't intentional doing it. I'm all, you know, since you, if I was trying to get away with it, I certainly wouldn't have sent, wouldn't have sent an email saying, hey, you know, I got my curb cut. You know, it looks like I'm working toward my buildings, but, but you bring up a really good point and, uh. I, I'm, though I spent a lot of time with the board, I'm not on it, so I'll just throw this out, is that, uh, you do bring a very good point. How does the building inspector know my eighteen acres is buildable in the first place? There has to be something that ticks his box that tells him that he can go forward with giving a permit on that piece of property. So I would think that, that would tell him there's a special permit. Obviously, there's some sort of glitch there where he's. Well, by the, the sounds of what's going on down the street, is that they're not checking, uh, to make sure whatever's necessary is in place. Is that his responsibility or yours? I suppose it's a little bit of both to try and make sure the communication's open. But I will, uh, I will make sure on my stuff, uh, that I'm following that, the permit. I have it sitting right next to me right here, and I'll make sure that whenever I go forward, I'm very careful. Um, going on, my question to the board was, I've called three conservation, I don't know what you, what do you call them, conservation easement people? Um, conservation, help me, guys. What do you call conservation?
Yeah, yeah, you know, um, land trust, uh.
Land trust, like Kestrel Trust, yeah. So I've called three of them. And they've all said they're, uh, too busy and have no interest. And, uh, that was one. The other two didn't even bother to call me back. I called three times each. Um, so I think that's the same case for them. Somebody had mentioned earlier on that Conservation Commissions can hold the easement. And, uh, I'm curious if that would be, I mean, I think that meets the requirements of the board. I guess I would have to solicit the Conservation Commission to ask their opinion, but it seems like the easiest way to do it. Uh, my interest, because I'd like to think I'm a person of my word, and we worked really hard and long to get this done, is to, um. I say that here, I went and made a mistake on the, on the permit, but that was not by, by, uh, wasn't meant to be. So, um, I would, I would like to think that while I own it, no one will be doing anything in the conservation areas. And when I sell it, the people in my advertisement, I make it very clear that there's a lot of restricted land there. Uh, you guys have a great system where you put all the permit information regarding, I guess, every one of these online. Um, so it was great to, to find that. I didn't realize it existed. One of the customers told me about it. And, um, I've been able to share that with these customers so they know what permits are in place and what's required of them. And I've told them that everybody, I've had tremendous interest in the property. Nobody has, well, one person pulled the, the trigger and actually put, put it on deposit, but they backed out. Days later because one person was interested, and I think the other part of the couple was not as excited about building a house. It's a lot of work. So I think it's to go, probably possibly before winter, but if not, whenever it goes, it'll go. But I'd like to get the Conservation Easement put in place, um, to solidify this and, uh, keep it moving forward. I know I got two years, so it's a year and a half or so left, but. I'd rather just get it taken care of. So do you see any concerns from the board if I solicit the Conservation Commission of Chutesberry and have them get on board to take the easement?
I don't think we have, you know. From what I recall, there's nothing in a permit that was concluded from, uh. You know, having the Conservation Commission, uh, hold the lien on the, uh, you know, hold the CR on the property.
We have in the past urged people to ask the Conservation Commission.
Say again. It's hard, it's a little hard to see or hear you guys. Can you repeat that?
We have in the past asked people to ask the Conservation Commission to do this. I mean, it, it hasn't worked out on those occasions, but, but we did make the suggestion.
Okay, is it because the Conservation Commission wasn't, uh, interested or just was, didn't work out?
Time, but it's not all the same people now, so.
Gotcha.
Was that the?
Well, that was when we, when we, Oshavsky.
The first one.
Yeah, the first one.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and we urged tomorrow too.
Yeah.
But in both cases, they, the Concom didn't want to do it. But, but they're not the same people.
Right, and I wouldn't be surprised if some sort of fee has to be paid every year for them to take the time to come down and inspect it, and maybe that's, you know, an impetus, something will help them feel comfortable doing it.
Well, I think that they, they do have a lot of other work, that's for sure.
Yeah. Okay, I'll give that a try, and if anybody has any suggestions on other, um. Trusts that would be interested in taking this, I would, uh, love to hear it, because I'm having, I'm hitting a roadblock.
Which ones did you talk to, Mark?
I'd have to go back in the notes again. I'm not as sharp as I used to be, but it was Kestrel Trust, it was the, um.
It was about Grace, uh.
Grace, yeah, Grace, and then there was one other, and I can't remember which one that was.
Franklin County.
Franklin County land.
Yeah, it's, it's mostly West County, but it's, it's still, they're, they're much smaller, but if it wasn't one of those, you could try them.
I think that was the third, and I'm pretty sure that was the third, and I think that said something about being a little farther out than they want to go, and they would have, have to charge a sizable amount to go do the inspection, something in that fashion. That could be getting them mixed up, but. Um, all three were roadblocks.
Yeah, I would, I will say just as FYI, in, I. Think it was actually, when we, when we updated the open space design a few years ago, one of the conversations was. Getting someone to do the conservation restriction is one of the harder parts, just because unless it's a really big parcel.
Yeah.
Feel like they know it to monitor it, given other responsibilities is. So it's, it's a good concept. It's the operationalizing that is the challenge, I think.
Hey, do you think an engineering firm would take it on? I mean, could that work?
I have, I have no idea.
I think they have, they have to have some ability to do the conservation restriction, and I'm not sure who, who gets it. I don't think you just get to raise your hand. I think there's some process involved. But I don't, but I don't know.
You mean some sort of approval by the state or something before you could just take a conservation restriction?
I, I, I think, but I, you know, it's, it only, I only think that because it's usually land trusts or bodies similar to that.
Right. I'm just thinking environmental engineers, possibly.
Say again?
I said, just thinking that if maybe, if they have a division that's environmental engineers, that they might have something that allows them to hold land for their clients as well. I'll check with, uh. Um. Yeah, there's a big one down in, um, in Connecticut. My guy I worked for, uh, he's now retired as well, my, my envi- environmental guy. So I'll give them a call tomorrow and see if they can turn me on to who they use. I mean, they must have come into this all the time.
All right.
Yes.
Does anyone have anything else? You know, does anyone feel kind of comfortable with what's going on here? Does anyone feel like they need to know anything else?
I just wanted to express my thanks about the ripping it up. I think that gets us back on track, and I appreciate you, you seeing this again.
Best I can do.
You know, it's, it's fine, you know, simple mistake, you know, uh, you know, Mark, uh, as far as this, uh, your issue with the panda conservation restriction. Um, right now, I, I could say, you know, try the Concom, try the place in Connecticut, you know, harass the people, you've tried it again, uh, already, uh, Tom?
It potentially be costly, I don't know if it's allowed, but can a owner form a five oh one C three that conforms to conservation?
I don't.
Research or anything and.
But, but you're, you're welcome to, you know, uh, pursue any avenue, uh, that you see fit. But, you know, essentially, um. You know, I think, you know, we would talk, we would, I would be happy to talk about this again, um, at some point closer to the expiry of the, uh, permit, you know, when that, uh, will lapse. Um. You know, I think we'll, we'll check in with you and see where you're at with it. But, you know, in the meantime, you know, I just gotta tell you to, to keep the habit, and, uh, I wish you the best of luck in the painting.
Appreciate it. Yeah, it sounds great. What I'll do is, uh, I'll send the DPW an email tomorrow asking to rescind the curb cut, and I will CC you guys on their response, showing that they've gotten rid of it.
Thank you, Mark, and, uh, I'll just ask everyone here, you know, keep your ears open, uh, for this sort of thing, and, uh. You know, if you do hear anything, uh, let me know and I'll relay it to Mark.
That'd be great.
Great. Uh, Mark, thank you very much for your time. Um.
No, no, I was just waving. I was waving to Mark, but he can't see.
Yeah. We'll see you. Thanks again. Have a good night, guys.
Bye.
Take care.
Okay, so, uh.
You ready for this?
Um. Now. Do we, uh, let's, let's, uh, let's talk about, um, the BLOX site visit. I don't know if you are thinking about leaving early, Ashley.
No, I'm fine.
You're fine, okay.
I mean, if we're here.
We're not gonna do that, but, you know, okay. Well, if, 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 if that's the case, then we just.
Yes, for the duration.
Okay, okay. Very good. No, I mean, I was just, you know, I know, you know, so.
Thank you.
Uh, you know, Ashley mentioned, you know, she got the.
I'm leaving town in the morning.
Oh, okay. Um, just checking where we're at. Yeah.
I can't look at, well, actually, never mind, I always wait up. I can't let my email to give you all the advice that.
Oh, because you can't connect. Oh. You know what, here.
It's fine. When we get to that, I can.
We're here in the meantime, try and, try and see if we can get that in there.
Yeah, it does. I'm gonna have to cycle. Oh, I thought that would depend, you think, no, it doesn't.
Well, you don't, you don't, it doesn't mean that. No, it doesn't, even that's so old school now. Right?
There's gotta be a wideband power button down somewhere. Can I run around and look? I mean, like, people must.
Yeah, you can run around.
I was gonna look. Finish with that.
So, um, you didn't need it.
Try the license.
I, I. I'm cursed with this kind of stuff.
Is it okay while you guys are working on that?
Yeah, yeah.
Start talking about, uh. Um. There is a, oh, no, it's just one, sorry. Back off. An application for a site plan review.
Yeah.
For an accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, we're back.
Back to the, did you get it?
Go ahead.
So, uh, they started work down the street here, uh, accessory apartment. Um. It, it kind of, maybe it looked like a, uh.
Where is it exactly?
On Leverett Road.
No, no, like. Is it in here in Lakeview?
Um, yeah, very close to the pound sign.
It's the.
It's a bit partial.
Perry Hawkins.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the Hawkins House. And I have some stuff, uh. Little email about it. That's it right there.
Where you want, where you want to pull up.
That one will be fine.
Twenty-seven pages.
Is that twenty-seven pages?
Yeah.
Well, you know what, go, uh, go back, um, and open up the other one. This is thirty pages, yeah, so that has.
The sort of one?
Yeah, that's, that's the one, um so you probably uh. Share that, you wanna, if you want to share, well, yeah, yeah, we can share it if you want, um.
There's no one I'd like to share with.
Huh?
There's no one I'd like to share with.
Yeah, but if you, well, I guess, yeah, that's true, well, this is online, I don't know if this is uh interested in as I am, but. Um, okay. You know, it's kind of, it's good to share it because that way, you know, anyone goes on online and.
Yeah, okay, there you go.
So, uh. Yeah, we're, we're just, you know, we've been asked to look at this for the ZDA, and you know. By kind of hearing my response that says, uh, we looked at it, no comment, or we looked at it, here's our comments. Well, like be part of the process to allow them to proceed with uh dealing with this request. Um, they uh. You know, so what happened was the, you know, building inspector's office issued a permit in error. Because they didn't realize that it was a requiring site point review, and didn't check for that, and um. Yeah, got ahead of themselves, so. That was uh from what I understand, it was maybe someone knew there, and it it fell through the cracks, I think they're trying to look more closely at things now, but. Anyway, um. So then it kind of uh came to the town's attention, and there was a stop work order for them, yada, 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 uh. Now, I thought there may have been an issue with it, I talked to John, and initially, there was this question of uh. John Thompson at the ZDA, right, and there was a question of. The setback from the front of the lot, that was what the issue could have been, however. The zoning by law for accessory uh apartments.
And what? It says it's required.
Yeah. Front setback, required ten feet, I don't really get the ten feet there.
That's about true. There's no front. There's no front setback.
That's right, yeah, yeah. Or that, you, you're, oh, that does ZDA mean here? So, uh, the ten foot um setback, my guess is that that is a uh. Something maybe in a subdivision control law, or something in the state statute that they got. You know, I don't know, if you, you know, like in in a subdivision control law, there's uh, there's some things about uh. I don't know if it's frontage, I think with frontage every now and again, they say, you know. Uh, it has to be at least twenty feet or thirty, you know, you know what I mean, like there's some times where they say. You know, it's whatever the zoning says, but at least this much, um so maybe it's a member uh.
I think, I think, I think you're on the right track, I I think that it it is the case that in an open space design plan. There ha- the setbacks are ten feet.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, but but that's not what this is.
It's not what this is, maybe they saw that and put it in there, um this is prepared by the. You know, the contractor, right?
Yeah, 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 the Kingville woman.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um. So, well, based on this, right, you know, that uh was it, um, now, Michael, do a fine, let's see, uh. We go with, you know, page three is uh the site. Um. Is that where you go?
Yep.
So, we don't see a well or a septic system on this, and from what I saw in here, there wasn't. Any diagram of that, um. I think that the uh. You know, and and from what it says, there's a comment down at the bottom of the document, I think on maybe page thirty or so. Twenty eight, twenty nine, maybe. Where did? Oh, yeah, uh, on the top of page thirty, letter P.
Where we go there?
Yes, please. And then, yeah, if you want to watch, and anybody will rotate it.
Oh.
Try that, uh, oh, dots.
No, I got it. Here. Hold on. One second.
All right, yeah. No, I, I said, the site time review for an accessory apartment may only be approved subject to obtaining any required approvals from the board of health. And they say, we need to know how to obtain this information, we expect that this approval has been obtained by the FERCog Building Department. We cannot find a way to obtain this information. Uh, so that would be problematic for them, um, so. That's, I think, and then, um. You know, I I think John's aware, John told me about this, so he's aware of it, but there's the uh. The the diagrams don't show any smoke detectors, and one of the places that uh this would go is the uh. There you go, fire department.
Okay, you can stop tilting your heads now. So what do you want me to go to?
Um. Page thirty. But it's gonna be top, very top. That's it. Um, be right there, site time review. Means now I have obtained this information. So that's, you know, they're gonna have to figure that out, so. So that's it, uh I I think, um, you know, does anyone else, you know, have anything they want to look at or any questions?
I did, because I wasn't sure from the ZDA meeting, who was gonna pursue the questions they got about. About the heights. And I don't know if it's the planning boards per view or what, but the questions that I heard you made. Whether the height is conforming. The square footage of the accessory unit. The number of apartments.
When I was scrolling over this stuff earlier today, I believe that. The addition raises the height of the building from twenty three to twenty four.
Okay, because they talked about thirty two.
Yeah, so it's, it's, those numbers are well.
The um accessory apartment currently is allowed to be up to eight hundred, but Jeff Lacy made a point at the last ZDA meeting that the Massachusetts regulations are most likely as well to become. Up to nine hundred. And the. One floor of this accessory unit appeared to be around eight hundred forty exterior feet. But there is another story, and so it was left in the question as to whether it would be over nine hundred four feet. Um, of heated floors. And then, um, the question of parking spots was brought up because they weren't. Like, this hadn't been limited yet, so I don't know if that's been addressed, and then they said it all was on the footprint. But there are decks, I believe, in the new plan, and the question was whether the decks might extend into any sort of setback area. Because it's a non-conforming footprint of setbacks. Yeah. So the way I understood it was the height, the size of the accessory dwelling. The number of apartments, and whether any of the decks. Would affect setbacks.
I I was interested in what you said about the the R eight hundred foot requirement and and the state.
Yeah.
Maybe changing it?
Yeah, Jeff brought up, if there's a new housing renovation at source, I don't know the name of it, but it's essentially isn't just per the last ZDA ruling. It's more likely than not going to pass the Massachusetts uh government, which would um change. It would have the effect, one effective. Would be that the definition of an accessory dwelling would, the size of it would be limited to nine hundred feet or half the size of the existing dwelling, whichever is smaller. And that would contradict our eight hundred foot limit, so it essentially puts sheets very limited to nine hundred feet.
But that's not the case today.
That's not the case today, and then, um, another aspect of it is that it won't require. The Massachusetts level regulations, that it's a regulation of the family or owner who lives in the accessory dwelling, Jeff brought it up as a caution. Just to keep in mind, should this accessory dwelling be a little more than eight hundred, but not nine hundred, was essentially what he was saying. Could be a scenario that the the planning board might be able to accept. Seeing as it probably goes up to five hundred, but there was no definite answer during the ZDA meeting of whether. Uh, of the square footage of the success of the dwelling. Exterior with eight forty, but given that the interior is smaller, it's probably close to eight hundred, as is on the one floor. But then Jeff Ujim, I think is his name, so for top, uh, oh, but I didn't put in the site for the calculation of this.
I think the changes are part of the whole state push to address the housing shortage.
Correct.
So they're adding to, like, because I. Last I go, when we were talking about this earlier in the year, I think there's only thirty. Communities in the state that have accessory dwelling unit bylaws, you know, this is one tenth of the entire state.
Fifty one.
Yeah, so I think they're codifying it so that there's more flexibility, and my sense would be based on what you're saying. When it passes, you might want to just revisit our bylaws and make, you know, make them so they're compliant. But that's a easy fix once it's all, I mean, it's, it's not like we we can be different, but we might as well make that paperwork here to say.
But that would just be a recognition that our world only supersede.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
I think when we had those really fun meetings with Chuck Demari about height and uh the lake. It became clear that this kind of stuff is, it's it's ZBA, ZBA purview for the decision, it just should be us in terms of a bylaw. Making changes, that's my sense of it, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, interesting. Yeah, I was unsure from the ZDA meeting, who was questioning those words to discuss.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Um, but so, just repeating what I heard.
But it, but in terms of measuring, I think it's my understanding that. That the exterior measuring and square feet would include the bathroom, and I don't think that counts.
Oh, I don't, yeah.
I mean, I think there are technical, technical. Requirements about how you measure, it may or may not intuitively obvious.
Yeah, I could see. What they need about it.
Well, yeah, and it's, yeah, it's just. Well, and and you know, the. The livable. That's defined on the building, though, I presume, right?
Yeah, but it, but but the exterior measuring is not going to give it to.
Right, of course, yeah, no, no, yeah, so.
He didn't have the site plan at the time, I believe, but yeah, he was going on some sort of. What he had available.
Yeah, I I I know what those uh, yeah, so anyway, um. Basically, uh, you know, I would uh, I would say we can say, yeah, we looked at it, and um. You know, the only thing we would say is to uh make sure you get the uh approval from the uh Board of Health as as needed, and any uh. Uh, required, um, you know. And then, you know, updates to the uh plans to uh. Is necessary to to show the well and septic, you know, if that's needed. Uh, we, I would say, yeah, yeah, make sure you get the approval to put it out, and. And that's about it, right? Um, otherwise, uh, no, no, no further comment?
Yeah, I think based on what Tom said, really, the situation is, as long as it was with our current bylaw. The planning works good, and if they want to wait a little bit until it gets superseded, that's up to them, that's strategy, but. Right now, whatever is in place, they just have to comply.
Oh, yeah, we can just say, yeah, as long as it complies with the uh current bylaw, we're good.
Yeah.
All right, because I I did get the impression from Becky's note that that. They would like to see this get, get resolved.
Oh, yeah, of course, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I don't, yeah, so, um. All right, so, you know, I I would entertain a motion that, uh, I'll I'll send a note to uh. To the ZDA, uh, indicating that the planning board has reviewed, and uh. That the only uh thing we would say is that if uh we're okay with it, that that as long as it complies with the bylaw.
So.
And.
All second?
Second, okay, very good, further discussion? No? All right, I want to call the roll, take care.
Bye.
Back off.
Bye.
Bonner.
Hi.
Hi.
Weston and uh Zepher.
Hi.
And you?
Yeah.
And that's everyone, okay, very good, thank you so much. Um, so much easier.
Well, we're transitioned, I just, if you have a time, it's not a long, even that ZDA meeting was really important.
Hmm. I should know, I could say so much.
It's online, I mean, I think H two, you can play it and wanted to ask you, there's something, but. Anything that's what Lacy talked about, where they talked about the permit accidentally being allowed at FERCog. It was, yeah, I was like.
Why did I intend to do such as, as long as it is.
Deacon, did you have a problem in the past with FERCog not, like the building inspector, not knowing about special permits and stuff?
It's not a surprise.
That's.
No, I mean, there, there is.
He's been there a long time.
Hawkins has, but they. They, they, their largest goal is to not get any hassles. Um, I mean, really, I mean, they're not, they're not. They're not going to be as looking offensive as what we want to prepare, but they they want things to go smoothly. And it needs to probably happen.
So when we approve a special permit, I'm, I'm assuming we have to file it with the county, but do we?
Well, we don't file.
They, the owners file.
Yeah, the apple.
Yeah, the apple, so is there a mechanism where we, like, we send, like, if we have our land use folks, we just have the. Point of. Operations, have them send a special permit that's approved, if they're proud?
We have none, and I think this gets back to what Nathan was talking about early.
Yeah.
It hasn't been our practice. Um, and I think that, you know, given the. I don't know, I think. Lack of hard ass quality. At the building inspector. I mean, that, that, this is an ongoing thing, and I think it's just the nature of the world.
Oh, okay, that's good to know.
Or, what perhaps we do with cynical.
Given the times, I think I'm duly cynical as appropriate.
We'll kind of check in once. Once I'm in the land use park and situated, I uh.
Yeah, Michael said something about that earlier.
What do we? Well, we know that uh. We do have a new land use park dot com.
Right, right, yeah.
Um. And I was here today, I saw that the owl was here, and I left. But I talked to Grace briefly, um, and. And she said that he's met with Carrie, and the laptop has been handed over, so he has the laptop now.
And they did a training session, because I walked in on.
That's right.
And I was happening, I was going for a meeting, and they were both here, so it was their first meeting, and she was sort of orienting him. But I was telling Deacon, I mean, he was the reporter for the reminder, you know, so. He's a good writer, you know, he's, he's covered our meetings, so he has good orientation about stuff, so be helpful in that regard.
Yeah. Yeah, I I got to uh sit with um. Uh, with Becky and uh John and. Yes, who's the chair of the uh Conservation Commission? But, that, yeah, I just. That, yeah, um, so anyway, we had a, you know, the four of us had a little interview with him sometime ago. Uh, shortly thereafter, we, you know. Becky brought to the select board, and they said, yes, done deal, and I think Michael was there for uh Hinkap. Or something like that, and kind of heard it like right away, so. That's good, so, uh, now he is, you know, hired, apparently he's done some training, um. You know, I kind of, you know, he's a. Should be getting the uh, maybe, I don't know if he has access to the uh land use book email yet, so that could be a gap. Where, you know, I'm kind of relying on the land use book to be getting some of these emails, and if he's not uh, doesn't have access yet. Then uh, that'd be problematic. I was trying to get in touch with Becky today, but that didn't happen, she was at a uh school committee meeting. At the elementary school at the time, while I was trying to get in touch with her, and that's that. So, uh, for next time, I would imagine we'll be able to uh. Be in touch with him ahead of the meeting, and uh, you know, we should be filed in, I would expect.
May he be as good as the Mr.
Hard, hard to.
So who are the on air team?
He'd be as good as somebody.
Linda.
Yes, okay.
Okay. Now, uh, I do have a review and approve minutes, uh, but I realized that. I was supposed to put the dates. Of the meetings with the minutes through my, uh, review were, which I did not do.
Okay.
I didn't do it on purpose, I'm kind of, maybe, but.
But they were submitted within hours of our meeting.
They were, they, uh. What's that?
The ones I, the ones I did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Zip them in. You did, yeah, you did, yeah, after.
I just give myself credit, that's.
Yeah, yeah, no, and, and. Where is the horror? The tooth. So, you know, I, I don't know if anyone, uh, you know, read them and does have any edits that they would like to talk about now. For the last meeting.
I'll pull them up. I, I read, I was the one in, um, beyond Newton, right?
Hmm.
One, yes, yeah, yeah, I read that. Looks great.
Yeah, that's right. Well. So. Unless anyone, Michael, unless anyone has anything specific, I think we can just.
Okay.
Go on. Talk them all. Um, you have something else?
No, I said I read these, these were good, I just had to look at it again to remember.
We've had this also, please.
And then, and then make a motion of the, uh.
I said it on the thought.
That's. She's, she's good.
Awesome, huh?
Wait, what, on what?
Did you?
Oh, no, 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 I don't.
You, you like, no, I'm down in, um, cookies.
I do like.
Yeah.
Do those have nut butter in them as well as like, are they like molasses nut butter?
It's peanut butter with, um. Brown sugar, regular, like some cookies, cinnamon, and some vanilla bean, but none of them very much, so.
So good.
Yeah. Somebody recently made something like your peanut butter, you could poke them in the back, wanted to try.
I like that.
Yeah.
The nice direction has now.
Did you guys realize why he made peanut butter cookies?
Oh, yes.
They got, they give me all T V cookies. Because, you know. That's, we are the T V, okay, I'll say it.
You do the, um, the deserted one for the plant, for the, um.
I, uh.
Universal meeting, I can't remember.
Right.
Did you clean that?
I did not, paid for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I went inside of the competition the first time. Next year.
Okay.
Now, one, one participant has, uh.
Lost words.
Yeah. So these, these guys are just eating chips and salsa.
I'm following. But how?
Now we just get to watch ourselves instead.
Okay, so, um. We want the site visit.
So we're good with, we're good with minutes?
Yeah, yeah, we can't approve them with.
Without the date. Uh, okay, so it looks like. It is set for ten thirty for, on the eighth. Um, which is, is that Thursday?
Um, that's right, I don't know, I don't know the address, this is, yes, I don't know the address, I shouldn't.
Yeah, I don't either, and so that was something to talk about, but, so he says, please. He says ten thirty sounds fine, just ensure that all participants are wearing pants, have at least clothes, toe shoes. Preferably safety tote and have safety glasses and hard hats.
Oh, holy shit.
He said, we have hard hats if they need them.
Yeah, but I think so.
Okay, and I said, got it, thank you. And I said I would relay that to the board and, yeah, I have no idea, I mean, I know it's on Pratt Corner, but I don't.
I can tell you where.
Yeah, I can't go, I'm gonna. See the ocean, I, next summer I'll plan things, I'm planning boarding, sorry.
You think the problem is we bring our hard hats because I don't have our pants?
I think you should try and see what happens.
I think wearing pants is really good.
So, for, if you go down, let's see, how to describe it.
Is it next to where Miriam lives?
It's past there.
Huh?
It's past there, so if you go to junkyard where the hard turn is.
Yeah. Well, from which direction?
From the top of the hill.
Okay.
Yeah, you're coming up, so if you're coming up the hill.
It's on the left, right, that big thing on the left?
No, it's hard to see, it's a, it's a gate, it's on the right for you. If you, Jeff, if you're in warehouse, it's coming, you're on, it's on the right. It's almost the top. I don't, if, if you go up. Pratt Corner a lot.
Uh, you know, I don't even know. I know there's, um. Pratt Corner is San Hill, the San Hill goes up.
Oh, yeah, keep going.
I'll tell you what.
Your bar neighbor.
Go with Google Maps, make sure it's on satellite, it's the only solar field in Schutzbury, you can see it from space.
The only what?
It's the only solar field in, uh, Schutzbury.
It's in the address.
Yeah, it has a technical address because the fire department needs to go there.
So it.
Oh, it's a.
Cause Ash Miriam's on the right.
No, no, no. Is it that?
If you're. Road heading towards the center of town.
It's, it's before Miriam's house.
Apple's is Pratt Park?
Yes.
And it looks like they're driving, oh, I see it.
So, yeah, when you're on Pratt Corner.
It's here.
Oh, wow, look at it.
Oh, Mike has got this, okay.
So here's Clark, that's the, the big junkyard.
Uh-huh.
This is the hard turn, if you're coming up the hill, you'll.
Go right in.
And soon after that, on the right. And there's one house across from it, and, uh.
So Miriam would be further down on the left?
Miriam is, this, this is Reed Road, which you'll know, there's a little, there's a pull off now with big rocks.
Yeah. When you go up there, you'll, you'll see it, you know.
That's my house, you know, you look down the road and there's a chain link fence gate right there, there's some telephone poles with big electrical equipment on there. You're like, oh, there must be some logic stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I see that, but that's not where it is, isn't it?
That is where it is, street view. Yeah, no, it's been drawn Pratt Corner, my god. That's just weird.
Where, where's the, all the electrical stuff by the side of the road?
It's, it's, it's right there, um.
But where?
No, 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 he's talking about the substation. Uh, no, no, not the substation.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, that's what he's asking about.
That's what I'm asking about. I don't want to worry myself.
Substation's down here, the cemetery here.
Okay, just wait, um, okay, that's, um.
Drive, you drive, you drive, you go past the Amherst watershed, this is all the Amherst watershed in here. And then just keep driving till you make the hard right.
Okay.
And you'll see the, the.
Clark, so it's Pratt Central Park.
It's a smidge down, but.
Okay, yeah, I got it now, I got it in my head, I just.
If you hit Leverett Road, it's not too far.
That's true. And when you hit the New Hampshire line, definitely turn back.
Uh, definitely turn back, I know New Hampshire. The, 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 the south, the north, I know New Hampshire.
Alright, okay.
So it looks like. Deacon, Jeff.
It's, yeah.
They, Michael.
What's that, what day is it?
It's Thursday.
It's ten thirty.
For, about two hours ago.
Oh, yes.
Um.
Will it really be only one?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Were you up last time? I mean, we walked, we had something to look at last time, which was. Trouble something else, we had to expect, but. I mean, once you get through the gate, you walk up the road. And then get all the panels on the left, you can walk around there as much as you want, but it's not fun, it's exciting. And then. What we did last time with the concom is we had issue with retaining. Water pools, whatever they're called, um, so we looked at that a bunch of times, but I can't imagine you'd be there for the.
Unless there's something.
Yeah, exactly.
Does somebody have a list or?
Well, I don't think we know anymore, cause it's, I, I. We didn't return after you told them to fix it, they reported that they fixed it.
And I think Jeff went down there.
Oh, he did?
Yeah, he did.
Okay.
Like, he didn't need to go outside either because it's, uh, outside, I mean. So there's a gate when you go from Pratt Corner Road. You know, within, like. Fifty yards of Pratt Corner Road, there's a gate that would prevent you from passing with a vehicle. But it's just a gate that crosses the road, you can just walk around it. Right? And you can walk up to where the facility is and the detention pool is outside, right? So that was where the work was being done, um. And, you know, in addition to some other places that, you know, there was. There was some, uh, washout on a road, um, going into it. And then there was something about, uh, you know, the, the drainage, uh, behind the side of the road, um, actually inside the facility. Um. You know, you would have been able to see that through the fence if you wanted to, but basically, at some point. Uh, Jeff came to the board and said, hey, you know, I took a look, everything seems fine. Um, and I was like. It was on the report, it was on the annual report for fiscal year. Twenty twenty-three. So, uh. That's when it happened. And, uh, that's that. Anyway, um. Yeah, you know, so unless you, you know, you see some stuff that you want to look at, you, you'll be going.
Yeah.
And, uh, you, you'll be going.
I think everyone here accepted.
We, we're what we need, I mean, go down and.
Just at the gate. You're gonna, you're gonna pull off. I mean, I, I think I'd just be looking to see how the growth is happening, because it's. Not very successful, it's always growing back because of the pollinator net up, which is really.
So as far as your list, um. The special permit. Uh, well, sorry. Condition, if we.
Nothing since.
Yeah. And, um. So, yeah, that's that, um. I think, uh, we're done on this.
Yeah. That keeps setting it up.
Yeah.
Thank you, actually.
Yeah.
I'm really glad that someone suggested it, and it's good that it's happening, I would check it out.
It seemed like it was hurting cats for a little while.
Yeah, like two different people and, uh, they, they just, you know, threw out a date like. Three days in the future, they're like, hey, we're gonna be there. I'm like, sorry, that's not gonna work, with a little bit of back and forth, but, yeah.
Did we have a discussion a few months ago about the content of their report? I remember feeling like it was.
The annual report.
Yeah, it's spinning back, so. Not much helpful information.
Hmm.
Yeah, um. I think, yeah, it was talked about, you know, it's, uh. But, I don't know, nothing.
Okay.
Nothing gained, but. So that would be, you know, if somebody wanted to, to talk to them about that, he did. Um, I went. Looked at the report, you know. With the land of, you know. What is the, uh. The clause in the special permit says, give us a report. And give us a refresh.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Once a year.
I don't know if there's any, yeah, once a year, uh, by the Sunday, right, but, uh, I don't know if there's any. Any further kind of, you know, stipulation in there that, you know, you could say is not being met.
I'm just trying to pre-act it and say, this is information that we would find useful to know.
Yeah.
You know, like, it would be nice to know. You know. Energy. Generated, um, you know, any known. Issues that came up that required maintenance, um, you know, I don't know what kind of. Health and status, because there is energy storage on the site, if you get to know, like. Any. You know, because it's all about, it's monitored from Florida remotely, so if you get to know if there's any trouble calls, I mean, all that kind of stuff.
You might be able to, uh. Well.
You.
So, I mean, I won't be part of that, obviously.
I mean, I'm happy to relay. Questions like that to them in the future, and so. Establish the data.
I think we should probably talk to them about. Um. What sort of inspections they do follow in significant.
Yeah. No, we, I thought we reported something, I know that was in the new bylaws, we reported something. Maybe I should ask that question.
Cause, cause that's. That's what that stuff happens.
And those seem to happen all the time, because of what these days.
Yeah.
Well, there is lithium battery storage there.
Yes.
It got a free part of the planning board before, I think there's general awareness of what it was, it was.
You know, I, I understand from a conversation with someone in, uh. In Pelham, that there are two types of energy storage, lithium, lithium energy storage is one with coal. That catches on fire and it's one with, um. The iron. That isn't quite as effective, but doesn't catch on fire as, well.
Oh, that's good to know.
That one. Yeah, so that would be good to know in terms of, um.
Yeah.
You know. If it, um. If things happen that, that is required and other stuff.
Oh, you know, the other thing that's huge. Is. We had a report updating contact information. Because the personnel change and this, you know, the whole idea is an emergency, we want to know who to call, not be Googling.
Yeah, now there's a few. Things in that permit they can, uh.
Yeah.
Go down.
Yeah, that's, I know that.
Yeah, it's, thank you, but I don't think so.
It's very defined.
Is that the only lithium, um, large lithium battery storage in town or the others? I hope that, uh, I, I don't know.
No.
There are not others.
Except the one that's going next to your house.
Thank you, they can't, there's a verbal component, but, excuse my ignorance, and what's going on at your house?
I just ran it up. Uh-oh.
That's a fire line.
It's an intruder alert.
No, excuse my great ignorance. This is the relock, we kind of know that we lock site.
We are, yes, yeah, that's the only ones.
Okay, just.
Yeah.
Making sure that I am.
Yeah, it was about, I'd say. Maybe two years after. The site went in, they came back for the, the battery storage. I think that was. Roughly speaking. I think that was roughly speaking.
And this is how many acres of um solar, you know, about?
Very clear, I'm not sure if you're ready to go along.
Thirty clear, but let's let's come on in better, and let's land in solar.
Yeah, yeah, because you gotta have a perimeter.
And like say. Like that side right there, like just make sure that's the right thing.
You would have the decision? Is that the decision?
Which we got in March, so if we wanted to put a thing on our agenda for maybe like on September.
Yeah, we can track for February, it's it's due in February fifteenth, two thousand twenty five, so just.
We could say we'd like to know these things.
Yeah, also you do the site, you do the site plan, you, you know, after that, you know, and maybe uh. Maybe invite one along to the meeting, right?
Yeah.
You can kind of pull all that stuff. Should be relatively straightforward, there's nothing, non-known action items or whatever, there's a.
And was this um Paul's land?
Oh, still with.
No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm trying to get up to speed, but does this happen before I go on the plan?
Yeah, yeah, the utility leases the leases of Angela Coats. Around the next era.
I know the lease of the land behind my house too, uh what was the one before?
Uh, what's that?
Before, yeah.
Uh, it was the two guys in Chicago.
Yeah.
They're credit to fall flop groups.
Uh.
Oh, yeah.
Forty year lease of.
Lake Side, Lake Side, there you go.
The land behind you.
Yeah, this is, this is the third thing.
Big hood.
Okay.
But it's the land that's that's to buy, probably not gonna happen, but but that happens, like I don't know.
Nick, and those guys cared about it, yeah, they bought a membership for D A C.
Did they?
Oh, yeah.
Ah, that's tough, that's energy.
They literally were in the credit to fall flop business before they did this.
Yeah, that's uh.
True environmental swap.
Before they lost somebody else.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And and that's hearsay, folks, that's not any uh statement that's a visual, that's a broad uh. Statement about, you know, financial services, uh businesses.
So I'm looking at this report, maybe it would be good before you go on the visit to have a look. Uh.
Is that sent to us, was that?
I can re-forward it to you, I have it like carried in a folder somewhere.
But that would be great.
I'll just forward it to the planning board.
I think at one point I might have forwarded that to the select board of block.
After sending the sketch.
You're so close. You're talking housing? Yeah, yeah, are we done with ReLone? Yeah, so, you know, I don't have uh too too much on this unfortunately, I don't know. Yeah, I'm not sure uh what we'll do, um obviously, you know, we can. Do something to make uh accessory dwelling units easier. Um, you know, we could do something tiny house or anything, but. That's problematic, right, because in doing so. You're gonna have one or two things, right, one would be the current building law requirements, which. You know, two hundred, not two hundred fifty deal of the front edge and what's the acre to find? Ninety thousand, was that an acre and a half?
Ninety thousand is just over two.
Just over two, I guess, so uh, you know, that's that's kind of a lot of land for a tiny house, right? If you just own one. So, yeah, it's um, it's not clear how. How, you know, John changes specific for tiny houses could be beneficial, and you're onto the. The issues with economics, but there being no sewer or water, right?
I think that's, I think you could do, I mean, I think open space would provide some relief on the. On the price of property.
Right.
But 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 this, but the well and the septic, that. To make it work in an economic way, you've you've got to be able to develop some sort of system where. A tiny house is not paying full trade for a well intercepting its own.
What I didn't. I was gonna build like that, but.
Yeah, no, I did too, so uh, but with an open space designer, you 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 don't have tons of requirements and you don't have lots of requirements. So you can have smaller ones.
Yeah, yeah, but it but it doesn't solve, it doesn't do anything for the well and septic.
Well, two thoughts, one, I mean, on the open. I mean, on the tiny house issue, the other scenario that I thought of last year, which is problematic, is that. I don't think it changes what you're saying, Deacon, but even if you were able to cluster them, you're effectively creating. A funkier version of a mobile home park, because you have lots of little. You know, you're you're changing the character of the neighborhood by having lots of people living in close proximity to each other, so. That's a a townwide discussion, like you're saying, okay, this part of town, lots of people who live in close quarters, which is different from zoning for the rest, so that's a big conversation, but. I think where I've gotten to thinking about this a bit, given what Deacon's saying about the requirement for water utilities. I haven't looked into what we require for multi dwelling units, but it seems like that's the, that's where you create a affordable housing. Where if you have one structure or you have a couple of structures that have multiple units in them. Then you only have one well and you only have one septic or you only have whatever, and I don't know how much, how many human beings a septic can hold. But it seems like that's. A way to do it, but I haven't looked at what our zoning allows, and then there's the practicality of like. How much water can a well, how many people can a well support and how much, how many people can a septic support if you had fifteen people, twenty people, was that?
But those are, but those are questions for the board of health.
Yes, yeah, again, again, we can't come back to what else, so maybe I should. Or, you know, maybe kind of arrange us some sort of a joint meeting or at least I can reach out to them.
They may have some ideas, but they, but I do think that those, that those. Those infrastructure costs for for living spaces just have to be, have to be smaller.
Yeah, so why did we uh prohibit trail flights?
We, when we needed the zoning, we 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 carried over that prohibition from very. Very old zoning that preceded all of us, because we didn't want to damage the planet.
So is already in the books.
Yeah, at the bottom of the hill.
Well, it has went across from the school.
Yeah, yeah, right, what's that?
Helen has a little mobile home.
Yeah.
Place.
Across from the community, but I guess. Um, and they're building, you know what, Helen, what you're talking about, uh. A multi-unit dwelling and it's affordable housing, so they must have something for that.
Well, I think the two, I mean, the two things that strike me, one is just conceptually moving away from the requirement of simple family homes. Is important, then there's, like, some of Pelham, like, think might have water or sewer from Amherst.
They, yeah.
So you have that, all of a sudden it opens up.
It would be interesting to look at other towns that are similar with infrastructure of Chutesbury and see if they're, what they're doing. And I'm curious if if you all know, I mean, is it true that if you don't have a certain percentage of your. Housing in your town as affordable, that your zoning bylaws can be superseded if someone wants to come in, like what's happening? Right, because I remember you saying we should be paying attention to that, because I think, yeah. We have.
We have.
With calls? Where were they thinking?
Where they wanted.
Same spot with the solid. Present.
I think they were, they were threatening that before. Before the town decided to pay the inflated prices and was paid it too.
Hey.
Roberts and Coles were getting together.
Wow, that's a long time, that's the nineties, right?
Yeah, well, the desire for money's been raked up.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's it's tricky, I mean, I will say, I remember like. Ten years ago, through work, I had a, so we're probably gonna find out, plenty of person have a website with all these. Stats about all the municipalities they serve, and one of them is that. Data about how many towns have a ten percent. You, I mean, really, yeah, and I think it speaks to the rural area, I mean, there's, there's some places like, you know. Presumably like a long metal, they have water accepted, but maybe they don't want that, but then there's a lot of small cats don't really.
Right, I mean, there's no public transportation, you know, you're, you're fifteen, twenty minutes fast from a grocery store. You're in a car, and a lot of times, obviously, with affordable housing, there are issues. But I I look at what's happening in Amherst and all these these units that are being built and I. And then I look at all the land in Chutesbury and I, I'm curious what will happen. Uh, and I also have to say, you know, as a teacher, like, in Western Mass, we're hemorrhaging families. And our schools are struggling and it might not be the worst thing to have, you know, fifteen or twenty. Affordable housing units in town to bring children to our schools and, you know, such.
You know, uh.
Well, I think. Affordable housing also comes with a very, a very bureaucratic definition. It doesn't mean that the housing is actually cheap.
Right.
It it means that it's complied with state regulations qualified. So that, so that there are situations that have happened in various towns where. Where the qualified housing was more expensive than than the non-qualified.
Yeah, and I've looked at the praises for the affordable units in uh in Amherst. Just out of curiosity and I couldn't afford it, you know, in the future, like, I don't have a great salary, but it's pretty good.
Yes.
It's.
It's a, it's a, it's a clunky way to deal with problems.
Yeah, I talked to some of your uh. I think it's the Amherst Land Trust, it's like a small land trust, and he was explaining to me, and I ran this by Rita. And she shot it down for some reason I didn't understand, but the land trust bought some land. And then they leased it, they leased it out to the builder, so you can build a house. So the person living in the house owns the house, but not the land, and there's part of the. Ownership agreement is that when you sell the house, there's a limit to how much profit you can make on it. You know, so you can't just live it to make money.
Yeah.
And so, and the value is always depleted because you don't own the land, and I mean, we have.
Yes, there there, there's a trust that owns the land, right, and then the house is on.
Yeah, and uh, and then we have, we have our CPA money, none of our CPA money for housing, you know, because there's two categories, you can do recreation housing and. Historic, and I don't think we ever use no housing, like, she's just building up.
So you put it up to Rita and and she shot it down?
Yeah, she said there's some reason it didn't work, but I didn't, I didn't understand her some reason it didn't work. I can forward you the email, I didn't understand why, she said that won't work in Chutesbury or something like that, and I just didn't, I didn't push to get clarity. I was like, this is a little complicated, she's the housing expert, I was just passing on the idea here.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I encountered that, like, you know, looking at some properties in Ohio, it goes out like a row house that was under that, and. I was wondering why the price of it was so cheap, you know, and I think it's, it's an interesting concept, because on one hand, you're. And you have, uh, you know, something that's within and reach for someone, uh, to, you know, be able to, you know, own their own homes. Um, but then on the uh, on the other side of the coin, right, then uh, they they're robbed of the benefit of homeownership.
Well, they do get some equity, they just don't, they can't maximize it, so like, if you bought it for two hundred, maybe you can sell it for two fifty as opposed to four, you know, that kind of thing.
Right, right. I mean, just, you know, uh, yeah, it's a.
That's so interesting.
Yeah, and I think that that part of it, I think, can get pretty complicated.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, what, you know, how long they've had it, and how much the market's, you know, how how do you determine the valuation, and, you know, so on and so forth, right, so uh.
It's all the here, just the different things that are out there, so I had no idea.
I think in Laurel Park, too, in in York Anton.
Yeah.
I think they don't own the land or something like that, and and they're limited to how much they could sell it. But I don't know anything more than that, I I know someone who lives there.
And it might be, I mean, if we get to that point, it might be figuring out. So down, you know, near down where you are, you're closer to Amherst, and so I don't think anyone at Chutesbury Road has Amherst water, but.
I, yeah, no.
But it's, it's more possible to get Amherst water at Chutesbury Road than it would be to up here.
Um, yeah, we could get. We could get it theoretically, if one was to build a line. And and live maybe as a crock lot, maybe three hundred yards from what are the apartments.
Okay.
And help people string electric, just deal with electric, you just put on.
Well, to be honest, when we launched our water, I went down there with a bucket and used it for toilets.
We won't tell them.
I needed some water.
Has anyone looked at the uh master plan?
It's updated.
It's updated.
What do you ask?
Well, there's a section on how, you know, I was kind of.
Oh, I haven't looked at that. I haven't looked at that, I was just generally speaking, it's updated.
I haven't uh looked through it, it's forty pages, so I feel like that's gonna have to be.
I mean, what's that?
Is that a planning board thing or like an all works?
It was. It was not, it was not a planning board, John, it it had a lot of planning board influence, but there's a lot of lack of representation.
Which is us. From two thousand eight. Or something.
But, yeah.
Yeah.
Wasn't just. And it was never, and it was never formally approved.
Really? No.
The master plan?
Right.
We weren't sure. So it just posted everywhere.
Yeah, it was not, it was not approved by town.
It's a common law master plan.
It's a master plan that might well be defeated at town.
Interesting.
And and, you know, that's interesting, and and, you know, I've always been a little fuzzy on on master plans to begin with. Like, you know, because I know it's out there, but it's that master plan, but uh, it doesn't seem like um.
Well, we should look at it, I know we could have a lot of good arguments.
And when we talked about, a couple of months ago, I know Keith and I were talking about updating the, adding a climate section, but we could also do a housing section.
Well, there is a housing section.
No, no, we do it, like add a climate, I mean, one thing I, we could do, which I don't know if we've ever done, but. You know, like in E C A, we had these public forums to sort of introduce ideas and solicit feedback. So, I mean, it could be the planning board going with select board, or not even, and saying. We want to do a public forum to find out what people think about housing, solicit ideas, find out, you know, what gets residents, what gets resistance.
I I do like the idea of a public forum, potentially uh some sort of survey or something, and I don't know all the ways of them surveys. The other, the other thing I was thinking is, you know, like, what what seems to be like a real need in town is like a. A senior house, right?
Well, I think there's two, I mean, we're, I just, in our budgetary fights for libraries and stuff, I mean, the two things that have come to my, come to my attention. One is people who are getting older in town, and you know, you're on social security, you have a little bit of income. That with the tax situation, that becomes less affordable, so if you could stay in town but live somewhere else. That was affordable, that's possible, and then I think to Asher's point, it's the young families, like, up until broadband. We had no moving in, the way you sort of create a non-dying canvas to have your families moving in, that's usually kids, because we.
Has that changed in the last four years?
It's a little better, definitely, I think my son's class in like oh eight in the preschool was, there was two preschools that year. And there's, or he was born in, sorry, um, there used to be. I think regularly two preschools, and then it went down to one and it was really tiny, and I feel like there's more, you would know better, like, I think there's more. Is there one preschool this year or two?
There's um, I don't know, the last two years, there's been one class with like, you know, both year, but you know, like the three-year-olds and the four-year-olds.
Yeah. Yeah.
So then you're saying there used to be two.
There were two.
Yeah.
When Phineas was three, four, so like ten years ago.
So, yeah, so the three and four, yeah, so.
And then just dropped, like, a lot, and, I mean, the thought that had in hand when we have thirteen kids in it, it was just one.
Well, my twenty-five-year-old was in preschool, the first year she couldn't get in, because it was full.
Yeah.
Like, only, only certain kids didn't get in.
Yeah, I remember that time period too, with all your friends, that people couldn't get into the preschool.
That's interesting.
Yeah, we dropped a lot, like, my years on the P T O, there was a lot more students than there were by the time we left, it was significant. And it's not just Chutesbury, it's everywhere, in Western play, I think East Hampton and North Hampton are the exceptions, but Amherst, it's hemorrhaging people, Delta Towns, hemorrhaging people. School age families.
Well, you can't afford to live here.
No, yeah, I mean, if I sold my house, there's some way I could buy.
Well, and and it may not, you know, it 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 may not be an issue of affordability, uh, it may be an issue of demographics. Because if, at this time, there's how many people in uh your twenty-five-year-olds uh class?
Oh.
A bunch, yeah, less so, so, you know, you have these families, right, and, you know, their kids are going through the school and, you know, maybe they still live here. And they're taken out, you know, they're living in houses, but they don't have kids in the school system, right, so.
There's that too.
Unless, you know, and, you know, so like the, depending on what the, you know, the demographic um curve is. You know, the housing stuff in town, um, you know, i- if if there was all of a sudden, you know, uh. I I don't know what happened over the last few years, obviously, obviously, a lot of people moved into town.
Broadband.
Probably, a broadband happened and a pandemic happened.
Yeah.
I don't think there's been, I don't think there's been a lot of building.
There has not been a lot of building, but um, you know, there, there's been plenty of uh real estate transfers. And, you know, people have moved out, you know, people down, you know, probably.
And that gets back to your point about the demographics.
Right, yeah, so, you know, yeah, yeah, some people have moved out, aged out, whatever, and and now you've got, you know, some people have moved in. Um, that's not to say that, you know, affordable, some affordable housing wouldn't help the issue. Uh, wh- what I would also wonder is if there was any, say, we, you know, snap my fingers. Now there's a senior housing facility in Chutesbury, right here, and uh. I don't know, three, four, five, six houses that, you know, weren't there, were there before. Uh, being occupied, you know, with uh some elderly folks, now they're moving into this housing facility. And their house is uh on the market, presumably, and uh. On the market, presumably, and, uh, you know, so that creates that availability for families to move in.
I know that, that senior housing was always thought of as a possibility and looked at it too.
Yeah, in the back.
Yeah, so.
That's for Iberia?
Yeah, yeah, sort of like there's the library in Brooklyn, Whetlands, then there's a lobby in the back.
I think it's a twenty-two inch.
Is it really?
Yeah, and you can get access from the west hill, so.
Is that right?
Yeah, there's a wood road going in.
Is that, was that, um.
My, my, my pitch to the CPA was always to get a walking path. If you cross the street from the school, go through the woods path, and then come back behind the library, so the kids can go to the library after school, safer. I'm trying this thing, I don't know, I think it's trial.
The models are more on the other side?
There, there's wetlands in between the library and the backwoods, but the backland, I think, is high. And it's, I think it's pretty wooded.
And that, but that, that will not, oh, is that on Coles land? Is that a Coles road?
No, I don't think so.
Where is it?
Uh, it's on. It's off of West Hill, but it's, it's farther down, I mean, I want, it feels like, I feel like I remember if someone said it was UMass. Lots, it's something, it's, it's not Coles, I know that.
Well, I. Apparently, UMass had a tally there, something.
Oh, thanks.
Anyway.
But if you had new, say you had new people moving into the houses vacated by people moving into senior housing, it still doesn't address the affordability, because presumably. The people selling the house would hit market rate.
Right, right, no, it, it, it doesn't, uh, necessarily address affordability, but it could, it, it would. Um, presumably, uh, you know, assuming some percentage of, uh, you know, resulting real estate transfers. Are, uh, you know, households that are gonna have, you know, school-aged children, um. It would address the need to, you know, get kids into the school.
Yeah.
To, to an extent, so there'd be some relationship there.
I got one thought, and then, uh, would you just, maybe you were trying, because I've dropped my wife's part down the hill. Um, it's great to be a mechanic, but the one thing I was thinking about, like, with the land requirement. Is even if we make building easier, it doesn't necessarily make it more affordable, like, if we said it's only one acre to build. You would just build more houses, but it wouldn't necessarily change your affordability, that's part of the problem.
You know, I'm not married to, you know, the idea of affordable housing, I mean, with respect to how it is defined in, in state statute, right? Now, but it seems like it's, uh, kind of a mixed bag, and, uh, you know, probably an uphill battle in this town to. Um, to just make it economic, right, for a myriad of reasons, um, but. The, uh, and, you know, the, the, the question of affordability is a, a reasonable one. But it's, it's a, it's a silent need, you know, we don't have, you know, that anyone in town is already, uh. Here, maybe, you know, they may be struggling, um, but, you know, nothing, I don't think much of what we could do with zoning or anything like that is gonna help someone that's in a. House in Shrewsbury that they can't afford. Maybe, I don't know, you know what I'm saying, though?
It would be interesting to know, again, to see if towns or how towns are going for affordable housing, if that happens. Or if everybody just sort of waits for that ten percent rule to not exist, and so people, bigger developers come in and just.
The other thing, though, like, I was talking to the chair of the Ashfield Energy Climate Action Committee about. Some, how they perceive some things, and there's. The policy we almost brought forth about, um, the specialized opt-in code. Which would require, you know, electrification and solar and stuff, and the conversation they had was. It costs marginally more to do that for houses, and what she said, which was interesting, was the pushback of support. Was from young people who said, you know, we grew up in Ashfield, we're trying to stay in Ashfield, or try and move back Ashfield. We can't afford it, so the marginal difference of whether it's an electric house or not is irrelevant, it's like, there's a bigger affordability issue. And so just from a population point, I mean. I know how expensive, like, my older kids renting a Boston, it's astronomical, but if they wanted to come back here, like, you know, there's no way, if your kid wanted to move back. Like, unless they're moving into their old bedroom, it's probably not gonna happen.
I have a friend trying to move back right now, she's like.
But she has to, it's too expensive.
Yeah.
But the, but these are economic forces out of our control.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't mean we shouldn't think about it, but it's bigger than us.
Of course, of course, and, and, you know.
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just not sure, um, where we're gonna go on, but, you know, this question of, you know, senior housing seems like. I mean, I feel like we would have to work with someone, say, you know, one, work with other entities in town, as a large board. You know, what have you, but also, you know, start, you know, solicit a developer that might, you know, or, or, you know, a firm that. Might operate some kind of facility with it, line it up, how, how do you, how do you kind of do that? And, you know, is, is that even an appropriate role for, for the planning board to, to initiate that kind of a, a product? Which, I mean, that's a valid question, I mean, I would be inclined to say, you know, maybe, but.
That's all, agent could do it too.
I imagine there are then either individual or groups of individuals who are part of the board that were motivated to research it and. Learn the laws and talk to developers, you know, that's a force that would make it happen.
Well, I mean, I guess, like, you know, that, that's, obviously, yeah, getting, doing the work i- is, uh, the one piece of it. But the, the question is, um, is it appropriate for a planning board to, you know, is it within our powers? You know, is, uh, provided by statute, and, and, or, you know, or, or, or could there be anything inappropriate about us doing so?
I, I think we could look at it from a zoning bylaw perspective to figure out, if this is the goal, we want the town to move towards. We can draft the bylaws and bring it to town meeting for discussion, but the other stuff, which is looking for a developer doing that, that's. That's probably the select board saying, we want a greater working committee to figure out how to bring senior housing, and that's not us.
So, I mean, I guess we could potentially. You know, put some pieces together and hand it to the select board and say, hey, you know, if we see this as a need in town, you know, we'll, we're willing to. Try and do, you know, whatever would facilitate this, you know, by way of zoning, but it's kind of out of our hands in terms of the rest of it. That's, that might be the extent of what we can do, right?
Yeah, if you think about it, I'm sorry.
It might be a good conversation with the, with Coles, with Coles, is that right, people? If that, you ever have time for that, like, are any of your towns talking about this, and is that an appropriate thing, or?
I was just gonna say, like, you can, you can imagine the inverse, where there's a big push, public push that creates senior housing. And the planning board doesn't want to see it, so it all changes on the bylaws, I mean, that could happen, so, I mean, I think both has to have, you have to have the. The populace, you know.
Right, and, and I think, you know, the senior housing might be something the populace could potentially get behind too. So, all right, you know.
I was gonna say, I think we've sort of mentioned it, with like the transportation act, yes, and other things, but, I don't know, I'm, I'm sure we all think of it. There's no business and no tax base in this town beyond residence taxes, and I think that's a huge factor to consider. And it almost works hypothetically, giving sort of affordable housing or affordable living, when you are housed here. Unless you are of a certain class or. And if I'm correct, even in our actual plan, it's something about maintaining some sort of rural character. And that's almost saying maintaining not an affordable housing structure, so. It, I just think that's gotta come to the fore along with the top about affordable housing is. We've spent a work ever in this town. Or one of the four neighboring as rural towns that we are, and things like that, so, just wanna throw it out there. Another track to consider.
Well, senior housing facility would be, uh, commercial.
I, I will say, like, I have, you know, an opportunity to shop somewhere close by, accomplishing sort of retail. You know, if we're asking people who are probably even less mobile. It, it, it's always struck me, there are so few businesses.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that, uh, that may or may not be an issue.
Yeah, I, I.
You know, uh, obviously, they need, you know, certain, they have certain needs that need to be met, but, um. You know, there's always, uh, Russell Street, always just be an American.
Right, yeah, education is all around, too.
So anyway, I think it's time to, uh, wrap this up, right, um. Is there anything else on the agenda that I was supposed to, oh, I never did homeowner, yeah, that's it. Homeowner education and guidance is officially canceled. And that's it, uh, so, anyone make a motion? All right, uh, discussion. I just am, uh. Somewhat surprised that the person who always wants to have discussion, that when it's time to adjourn, it's not here at the inverse meeting.
Who wants to have this?
He's gonna.
He's missed out.
Okay.
We should discuss it.
This is a good meeting.
I think, yeah, I know, you know, uh, thanks, everyone, uh, again, um, I appreciate it, I, uh. You know. I like this, I, uh. You know, we're gonna probably have to go for a regularly scheduled meeting in, uh, December, right, this Labor Day, I can plug, Labor Day is the first Monday of the month?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the second Monday, we should be good, um. You know, we can maybe try, uh.